Good evening and welcome to our special school board meeting this evening for our public hearing for rezoning. This meeting is being called to order at six o'clock PM and will you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we have our agenda before us. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as printed. It's been moved by Dr. McNeely. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved, uh, second by Dr. Rockwell. Two at the same time, so I'll give you credit. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, at this time, we're getting ready for our public hearing. Just want to let you all know if we're so glad that you're here this evening and if you would like to speak, we would like for you to, and I know Ms. Johnson has given us some sheets, if you can just sign in with your sheet so we can have a record. And you will have three minutes to address the board this evening. So at this time, we will move forward with our public hearing and tonight is a public hearing. This is the opportunity for you to give us feedback, any questions that you want to propose to us. There would be no dialogue with the dais or the board members. And then our final decision or looking at how we'll move forward would be on December 5th. But I do want to say to our citizens who are present, we hear you, we've heard you, we've received numerous emails, and I don't want to think, anybody to think that we're not listening as your board. And so at this time, Ms. Segal, if you would come forth with our public hearing for the amendments to policy fifty-one twenty point oh one, school zone boundary descriptions, it's on you. Oh, your microphone is not on. Put your microphone on.
Yeah, guess it would help. I, I'm not used to this so much yet. A good evening, everyone. At this point, the documents that are attached in terms of the policy show the proposed school zones being presented with no changes for this year, but for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school bone, school zone boundary descriptions are being developed through the comprehensive rezoning process and that have had multiple workshops and presentations to the board. We had our first reading on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and staff has made some additional changes to clarify that the existing school born boundaries are in effect until the end of the year and that new zones will be prepared for next year. Any amendments to the school zone boundaries will be made in policy and presented from approval at a later date. That is the policy being presented, and I will now defer to Dr. Edwards for the presentation of the actual boundary and zoning issues.
Good evening. As we have shared throughout our citizens' input and throughout the process for comprehensive rezoning, we recognize that many of our schools are considered to be crowded and some overcapacity. And so we have adjusted our boundary lines to address some of those concerns while we also try to meet efficiency for finances and transportation concerns for students. So the boundary lines are the same as they have been since our last community input session, session with the exception of those that have been updated on our rezoning map and as are presented on the maps before us in the boardroom on today. We recognize by way of public input through email and phone calls and what citizens have shared at our input meetings, that there are concerns about some neighborhoods. But in order for us to move forward, we have to keep our zone lines stagnant at this point in time to address the budgetary concerns and be able to show what those impacts are. But we are still hearing that input and we're taking note of all of the concerns that exist. So we are maintaining that, but at this point in time, as we move forward, we are presenting the zones as are stated on our current rezoning website.
You concluded? Okay. Okay, at this time, we're on to citizens' input. For those of you who just came in, if you would like to speak, you can see Ms. Johnson to fill out a form, and she will bring it to me and I will call it in the order that, that I receive it. And you have three minutes to address the board. And also, I want to just say hello to the babies that are here tonight. Thank you for coming with your parents to our school board meeting, because that is the reason we're here, to do what's best for you and your family. At this time, for citizen input, the first name I have is Martha Squab, okay? To the microphone there and cut it on. There's a little button there. If you cut it on, and I think, and you have three minutes with the board.
Okay. Nice and terrifying. Public speaking. Haven't done it in a while. Didn't realize that I had to prepare remarks, so I'm going with it. Um, I guess part of my concern and feedback is that y'all provided, I guess over the span of three-ish months, five different iterations of the, this plan, okay? And then this, I guess, was the, I think, the fifth iteration. Is that accurate? And so my concern is that in the first three iterations that I reviewed, it looked like the neighborhood suburban heights was still going to be included in the Littlewood Elementary School Zone. However, it's now been moved to Glenwood Springs. And I just wanted to remark, it seems rather silly for me to go four miles and drive past my daughter's current elementary school than to stop at Littlewood, which is, I think, under two miles from our current address, especially since we purchased the house in suburban heights last spring with the intent purpose of my daughter attending Littlewood so that she could participate in the multi-age program as well as some of the other programs that Littlewood has established and that are so vibrant. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bradley, I think it's Danner, and then next would be Jonathan, trying to look, Jorkovich, I believe. Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Bradley Danner. Um, I live in the Hamilton Heights neighborhood, currently zoned for Hidden Oak. Should the rezoning go into effect, we will be moved to Turwilliger, which my wife and I are very much opposed to for multiple reasons. One, the ACPS website, as was mentioned earlier, the reason for this rezoning is to solve overpopulation issues at schools such as Hidden Oak. However, at the public input session that my wife attended back in October, data was presented to her, and after reviewing that data, my wife and I work with data for a living, it actually shows no change to Hidden Oak when the rezoning goes through. So this seems silly to us. We specifically bought our home in Hamilton Heights for the Hidden Oak School District, and now we are being told that our daughter, she will be starting kindergarten in the fall of next year. That is being taken away from us. We are not happy about that. And if the rezoning does go through, we will be looking into private schools. We will not send our daughter to Turwilliger until the issues with Turwilliger are fixed. We have alternatives to consider. Have the accelerated and advanced programs of these other schools, have we considered giving those to Turwilliger and hiring some of the best teachers to fix the problems? We have a sensitive daughter who's already been through trauma at daycare, and we refuse to send her into a situation where there could be potential chaos and turmoil during a period of transition to a new school. Um, I think that's all I have, but just want to let you know, we are opposed, and I will leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Jonathan Jorkowitz, been with you all before. Um, I appreciate the additional data that I've been able to see, so thank you so much for making that available on the demographics and the projections, including concurrency. There's just some problems that I am looking at. You know, currently, we have ten schools, according to the district's metrics, that are over-enrolled. And with a rezoning, the proposed map, we, we will have eleven. And that confuses me if one of our goals is to help get, get our enrollment down at schools that are already over-enrolled. So if the new proposed, as I look at the concurrency, I've talked about before, but Turwilliger is going to have, is projected to have with concurrency, a population of over a thousand students, eleven hundred and sixteen projected with a hundred and sixteen percent capacity. My kids are currently zoned for Meadowbrook, where they are currently at a hundred and sixteen percent, and now the school district wants to move into Turwilliger, where there's going to be projected to be the exact same situation, but with more kids in a larger school. I have three kids. First one's in first rate now, and I've got two more coming in, the system coming up. But it's no better at Wiles. Concerns concurrency has it at a hundred and twelve percent projected. Newbury, which is only K through four, a hundred and eighteen percent projected. Alachua and Irby combined, between a hundred and nine to a hundred and twelve percent projected. I'm just really concerned about the lack of forethought or investment in how we want to make these schools work in the western part of the county when the growth is all happening there. Um, you know, even Meadowbrook, as I look at it, with the new proposed rezoning, it'll be back down to seventy-nine percent. That's great for Meadowbrook, but now my kids can't go to Meadowbrook because we're not zoned for Meadowbrook. And even with concurrency, it only goes up to eighty-seven percent, and you have a school down the road that's going to be at a hundred and sixteen percent. I just don't understand that. Um, you know, Turwilliger is currently at sixty-five percent. I know there's a lot of different reasons for that because of kids getting bussed all over town, but, um, you know, even with the first year, if it was to be next fall, it'd be at eighty-six percent capacity, which is near overcapacity based on the, the district's metrics. So I'm just concerned about the lack of forethought and what's going to happen moving forward. There's a lot of development happening out in that area. I know it because I drive by it, and it's happening behind me and around me and next to me and whatnot. And there's new things getting proposed all the time. I want our kids to be taken care of. I want us to be thinking about the future and thinking about where do we need to make these investments for our schools? And if we can't build more schools, why are we thinking about putting more investment in east side schools? It's been floated in the news recently, instead of thinking about how do we want to serve our students where they're actually living. So thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it.
And thank you. And next, we have Kristy Stone, which will be followed by Jamie Saburum, Sabourum, okay? No, cut your mic on. Push the little button there in the middle of the mic.
Hi, I'm Kristy Stone. I'm here again representing the neighborhood of Huntington and all the children and families there that want to keep their zoning at the school Meadowbrook. According to ACPS PO, your policy fifty-one twenty, which states convenient access to schools, Huntington has the most convenient access to Meadowbrook versus the inconvenience access to Talbot. Parents like myself that drive our children to Meadowbrook in seven minutes, this would more than double to triple our driving time dealing with the traffic east of our neighborhood on Thirty-Ninth Avenue, along with the traffic on Forty-Third Street. Recently, Greystone and Summer Creek were rezoned back to Meadowbrook due to their convenience of access to the school. When I look at the neighborhoods that surround me, like Greystone, Summer Creek, Timberlane, and Heatherwood, we in Huntington are being singled out due to the traffic configurations. It is much easier for us to make a right-hand turn onto Thirty-Ninth Avenue than to cut across traffic on Forty-Third Street or risk red light runners. Another point, another point to consider is the traffic pattern of the school bus from Meadowbrook. Either this bus is going to have to do a U-turn on Thirty-Ninth Avenue to start dropping the kids off on, in Greystone, Summer Creek, and Ember Woods, or they're going to have to continue to use our neighborhood Huntington as a turnaround point. This does not make sense to have two school buses overlapping one bus stop. So I'm not sure why Huntington's children can't remain at Meadowbrook, why you already have a school bus that's using the traffic pattern. There's probably an estimated twenty-five to thirty kids in our, in our neighborhood, and that cannot have a significant impact on the capacity at Meadowbrook, especially when it's already been stating that that school will be reduced down to thirty, seventy-nine percent. I've heard rumors that moving our neighborhood and other neighborhoods around us to Talbot is going to overcrowd that school. So it does not make sense to move my neighborhood, the children around us to over, to another school that's going to be overcapacity. I'm just hoping that these elected officials will hear the plea of the Huntington residents and the family and keep, keep our children zoned at the school that they want to be at, and that's Meadowbrook. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jamie Sabourin, and I am a proud student of Littlewood, a proud parent of a student from Littlewood. I'm not used to public speaking, so please forgive me for my shakiness. I, um, I too bought my house in the Littlewood zoning because I did my research, and I found that the Littlewood curriculum was what I wanted for my child. I bought my house for that reason. Now, we are now currently zoned for Littlewood, and we will be moving to Meadowbrook, which is double the distance from my home and triple the distance from my place of employment. We cannot depend on this bus system. My daughter used to use the bus system. It was consistently thirty minutes late or a no-show, and my daughter would not be able to ride the bus because it is important for our kids to start school in a timely manner. I also volunteer daily at Littlewood because I have the time since it is such close, it's so close to my house and my place of employment. She participates every morning in a morning mile. Four of the families that volunteer for that morning mile are no longer zoned for Littlewood for the following school year. The morning mile is such a valuable asset for these students to run, exercise, and be able to focus during their time in class. My daughter also has a medical condition, that she has a severe allergy to an unknown substance. All faculty are aware of my daughter's condition and know when she needs assistance from the school nurse. The school nurse is also aware of my daughter's condition, and I feel that this is unfair, unjust. I don't feel that there's any problems that are being solved. I feel like there's just being problems being created by this new rezoning. I think that we need to halt whatever rezoning that is in place right now and really think about what we are doing. Another thing I would like to adjust is I am, address is I am a nurse by career. We are coming from this social distancing from this post-COVID era. Now we're going to shake up these kids' lives one more time by readjusting their whole entire school, their teachers, their friends. All of my children's friends are all going to different schools. How is this acceptable? This is alarming. There needs to be more thought put into this. Thank you for your time.
And thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have Ansel Meadows Raider, followed by Chris Raider. And I hope I'm pronouncing your names right.
I don't know if they can see.
Good evening.
Let's go.
You go first.
He said, "You go ahead."
My name is Ansel, and I go to Littlewood. And since the whole rezoning thing, it's been, I, I'm worried that all my friends are going to go to different schools. And also, I think Littlewood is a great school. And also, it's not only that, but I'm worried that I'll have to go to different aftercare, meaning that my friends former to be kids, I will not have them anymore. So that also means that it, and also, I'll have to wake an hour, wake up an hour early, meaning five-thirty, not six-thirty, and it will make a really big difference in my grade in school. So I really will, I really want to go to stay at Littlewood.
Very good job, Ansel. How old are you? May I ask how old you are?
Eight.
Eight years old. Great job.
Hi, I'm Chris Reader. I'm Ansel's dad. And he probably said it better than I could. So we're living currently in Kingswood, and currently zoned for Littlewood, which is around the corner from our house. This is the first house we've ever bought, and we bought primarily to make sure that Ansel would have a good school. And he does. He's got a whole team there that knows him, that can help him out. You know, Ansel's, he's a little different than some kids. He's got physical therapists there that work with him. He's worked with speech therapists. But he's also, this is probably not a surprise now, also in advanced math and one of the top readers in his grade. And so he's getting help on both ends. They all know how Ansel works, and having to establish a new team is going to be really tough. He's not lying. He's going to have to get up an hour earlier if we're going to Meadowbrook. And that's, that's coming out of a very limited amount of sleep already. He has a ton of homework. I don't know where it's going to come from. He might have to stop doing competitive gymnastics, and that would be awful. Additionally, we're seeing kind of a funny pattern with this most recent set of maps, which is that at the last hearing, we had a lot of folks there from Kingswood, and suddenly Kingswood is being sent a lot further away. And it's really hard to see that as something other than punitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, looks like Will Allen, I believe.
Good evening. Like you said, my name's Will Allen. My children attend Littlewood. We're, uh, along with our neighbor here from suburban, suburban heights. And I know that we have a lot of other neighbors that would love to attend it, but it's difficult to, to make this meeting. But I'd like to, you know, speak on the behalf of the neighborhood. It's, it's one point three miles away from Littlewood. We would ride our bikes to school quite often, and going to Glen Springs would not make that possible. It's significantly further, involves a busier, you know, busier roads, busier intersections. And, you know, I don't feel comfortable with that, not to mention the distance is, is going to be more taxing on the children. The bus system's already overloaded, but that wouldn't affect us at all at Littlewood. And like my friend Jamie, I also volunteer with the morning mile program, and it's, it's nice to be able to do that, but I wouldn't be able to do that if my free time before work is consumed by commuting the kids to school. Not to mention, you know, we have good friends in Kingswood that also go to Littlewood, but they will be going, not only, not, well, they, they will not be going to Glen Springs, but they'll also go to Meadowbrook. So it's kind of, we're kind of sister neighbors, sister neighborhoods. And that would be a lot easier if we were all still attending the same school. I, you know, as, as, as Jamie said, the bus systems, all of our friends that have ridden the bus, constantly reporting, you know, significant amount of time being late, and that's not something that we believe is good for our children. And then the after-school care, the EDEP program, you know, we, we definitely utilize that. And I know, hearing from other people that have come in later, that how hard it is to get into the EDEP program. We would hate to have to lose that and have to find something else if we transfer schools. Um, you know, that's something we definitely depend on for work with, with both of us working. Uh, so I just wanted to say, like, I, I would really think it would be beneficial to the community for Littlewood to remain, or for suburban heights to remain at Littlewood.
And thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Diane Gold. All right. And followed by her would be Vicki Wilder.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Diane Gady, and I am the mother of a second grade student at Child's Elementary and a resident of Alachua County since two thousand and twelve. I want to begin my comments by thanking the board for the opportunity to provide public input on the proposed zoning maps. I also want to recognize the hard work of this group to meet specific goals through the comprehensive rezoning project that ensure all our students in our district are able to receive a high-quality education. This group has made modifications to the proposed zones based on community feedback, which is appreciated. I am here tonight to provide suggestions for further modification to the proposed zones. I want to emphasize and highlight to this board the southwest community's concern that the proposed new Turwilliger zone creates a significant imbalance of students who are economically disadvantaged among the elementary schools that are located west of I-75. The impact on Child's, Meadowbrook, and Hidden Oak Elementary Schools is significant. These three schools are all now projected to have percentages of students who are economically disadvantaged at greater than forty percent of their student populations, which is a drastic change from their current enrolled student populations. And yet, Turwilliger is projected to have only twenty-four percent economically disadvantaged students. This is by far the most economically advantaged elementary zone proposed within the district. If adopted as currently drawn, these new zones will create a single very advantaged school in the district, Turwilliger. I attended a recent event where a parent even shared, "We're zoned to move to Turwilliger, which will be fine because all of the good teachers and staff will follow out there anyway." I asked the board if that is the intended outcome of comprehensive rezoning. It's disappointing to see that in two thousand and twenty-three, with all of the data we have available, there are proposed zones that create this type of inequity. This board identified balanced diversity of student populations, both ethnically and economically, as a priority for a comprehensive rezoning plan. And I understand that an external consulting company hired to draw the And I understand that an external consulting company hired to draw the proposals cannot understand our communities, our roads, or our traffic patterns. As a resident of the area for over ten years, I encourage the board to keep the neighborhoods that are south of Newberry Road, north of Twentieth Avenue, and east of Seventy-Fifth Street in their current zones. This will allow similar economic diversity between Childs, Hidden Oak, and Terwilliger Elementary. The students in the region that I described live five miles to Terwilliger, and many are already attending Terwilliger. Relocating these students to Hidden Oak and Childs reduces their travel by one or two miles, but it still requires the district to provide busing services. Keeping these students at Terwilliger will prevent them from having to change schools, and it will not negatively impact our current busing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your consideration, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Vicki Wilder. I, um, was not planning on speaking tonight, but I'm compelled to share, uh, my opinions. I am a longtime resident of Alachua County, and I, um, am also a mother of a kindergartner at Meadowbrook. And my neighborhood, Huntington, off of Thirty-Ninth Avenue, we are going to be rezoned to Talbot. And my first, um, my first thought is, why are we being rezoned to a school that's also overcrowded, that's approximately the same distance away? When I know that it's gonna be, cause a lot of trauma to my daughter, who is a very sensitive little six-year-old, who had a lot of problems transitioning from daycare to kindergarten. Going from a school with a hundred and fifty kids in kindergarten, going to a elementary school with a thousand kids. Crying every day, not wanting to go, and now she's gonna have to start another new school. And then also, another new EDEP, which she might not even get into, because if you don't get in in kindergarten, then who knows what's gonna happen? So, I, I'm very, very concerned for her well-being. You know, she's a, a COVID baby in essence, her and her little brother. And just changing their routine is, is not good. Is, um, and I, I'm sure there's a lot of other children out there that wanna stay where they are because they don't want their routine messed up. I mean, I love routines and my children do, and I, um, that's one of the reasons I wanna stay at Meadowbrook. The other reason is the bus, the new busing system is gonna go right through our neighborhood, but won't pick our kids up? That doesn't really make sense to me. I, um, I also, like, if we were possibly grandfathered into, uh, Meadowbrook the way that we were when we were transferred to Talbot, uh, from, we, twelve years ago, we were transferred from Talbot to Meadowbrook. And any children that didn't wanna go to Meadowbrook were grandfathered to stay at Talbot. And I think that that circumstance could work well for us now. And I think everyone in my neighborhood would say they would drive their kids and not use the bus system and not affect that whatsoever. If they and the siblings could be grandfathered in. And I know that's probably not possible for the whole Alachua County, but it's just something to consider. Um, and then, the other thing was that, um, yeah, the, the economic diversity, I know that's important to keep in balance. And it doesn't seem that, for us changing schools, that that's really gonna play a big factor in it. So, I just think we should stay where we are for the benefit of the children and, and the teachers. I also wanted to mention the teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Wilder. Thank you so much. Next, um, Jonathan Jorkovich, you're coming back?
I flipped over and saw another page on my notes, I wanted to make sure to come back, so I appreciate the extra time.
Well, you already had one, one spoken, so let's get the others.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Just wait for us, let me come back to you. I, I will get to calls next. And you have, how many calls do you have? Two? Okay, well, let me go ahead and take calls. Go ahead with the first caller.
Caller, please state your name.
Hey, this is Michael Bradley Hartman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead with your comment.
Is this coming through okay?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead with your comment.
This is Michael Bradley Hartman.
Michael Bradley Hartman.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead with your comment.
Okay. Um, I am a parent of two, um, a former Littlewood student and a Littlewood student. And I think you can see by the representation tonight that Littlewood is a fantastic place. We're balanced in every way. We're balanced racially, economically, educationally. And in this attempt to create a solution to some of the problems that the district has, we're creating a problem for Littlewood. We're pulling out the kids from, I'm in Rock Creek. We've now had three different proposed zones in the last few months. So, my neighbors may have rested easy thinking, okay, we're still zoned Littlewood. But now, then it was, okay, never mind, we're splitting you between Glen Springs and Littlewood. And then it was, no, now you're all going to Glen Springs. My neighborhood is upset. We are historically a very, very involved neighborhood. The parents are involved, the students are involved. You have there two people who are everyday volunteering at the school. My family volunteers every day at the school. These are all people you're gonna rezone to Glen Springs, and they don't, you know, they don't face the same kinda issues that Littlewood does. You're gonna pull out these solid parent volunteers. And you're also gonna pu- pull out a lot of very high-performing academic kids, because you've got all these, throughout Rock Creek, Rock Creek is a, pretty much a university community. The, the parents are involved, um, with the University of Florida or Santa Fe. Um, it's gonna hurt Littlewood. Littlewood right now is balanced. Um, it's a historically connected school, there's continuity. My mother-in-law was the guidance counselor at Littlewood for forty years. My husband attended Littlewood. When my son started Littlewood, he had the same teachers that my husband had. And my husband's, you know, forty. So, it's got community support and it's got the continuity. Also, we, everybody in our neighborhood bikes to Littlewood. Asking those kids to bike across Thirty-Fourth, where we know there are accidents all the time, pulling into our neighborhood and up and down Thirty-Fourth, is just, is just not a good ask, and it's incredibly dangerous for these kids. Um, I, there's, I haven't found anyone in our neighborhood in Rock Creek that's supportive of the move to Glen Springs, and not because we don't think that Glen Springs is a good school. I have friends who teach there, they're fantastic teachers. It's a great school, it's just not our school. We moved here, we bought this house because our kids were gonna go to Littlewood. It meant so much to us. It means a lot to our neighbors, and we're asking that, um, you don't mess up Littlewood and the amazing balance and the amazing school that it is by trying to, you know, solve another problem. And I really appreciate you're looking at this again, and I would really ask that, um, you reconsider messing with the composition of Littlewood's school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name, we have thirty minutes with the board.
Good evening, Board, Adriana Keen. Um, I had two things. Um, it's brought to my attention, I'm not sure if this is true or not, but I was just curious during this entire process, if anybody has sought to talk to the principals and the vice principals and try to get everybody in a room together, or do it in sessions, and have these principals come together to make these new boundary lines, to give you guys some suggestions. Um, it was brought to my, my attention that that hasn't, that hasn't happened. And to me, that seems that that might be a useful, um, a useful, you know, advantage is to reach out to these principals or vice principals. They know these families, and see what they could propose, see what they can work out, um, amongst themselves. And with, you know, help from the planning committee and DMPR. Uh, my second thing I wanted to say was, again, speaking for my neighborhood at Sunningdale. Um, the last proposed changes have the Cobblefield area remaining at Childs. Um, my proposed zone is for Hidden Oak, where we would have to be walking, uh, over Newberry Road the worst time of day, uh, and busing only half of our neighborhood. So, for those listening, and make the, you know, adjustments. Again, I would just advocate if we could, uh, either stay at Terwilliger or if we could be considered into the Lawton-Chiles Boundary Zone. Thank you much.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Now, back to our, um, audience. Is it Erin Karsinski? Followed by Monica Frazier.
Hi, my name is Erin Karsinski. Um, we just moved here and we live in suburban heights. Um, we were looking really forward to going to Littlewood, and we had really planned that out, um, and done a lot of research before moving here. Um, I was really looking forward to, you know, biking and walking to school with my daughter and being an active participant, just, it kinda, kinda like some of my peers, being an active volunteer and participant. Um, my wife and I are both, um, in the healthcare field, I'm a nurse. And a lot of our neighborhood, a lot of our neighborhood, um, are in the medical field. And we work certain hours, and a lot of times that means twelve-hour shifts for us. Um, back-to-back-to-back sometimes. So, in thinking about us being proposed, moving all the way to Glen Springs, which is four miles away versus a little over a mile away, I can already see in my head, you know, stories like the young man that shared his experience of having to wake up an hour early. That's really gonna cut us out of being able to participate in a lot of after-school activities, um, that we would love to participate in, um, and be a part of. It's so, and also, my mother was a school bus driver. It was really hard to staff SRP, and I have the utmost respect for SRP personnel that, um, work in the district. And I can already see sort of what's gonna happen and the impact that that could potentially have on people like our bus drivers, um, having to come to a location like ours. And I already am thinking about having a kindergartner riding the bus farther with older kids on the bus, and that's something that I'm fearful of. So, my wife and I have already been talking about, how would we make this work? Because we'd pretty much be having to drive our child to school at that point and not being able to rely on other, um, plans that we might have had with using public transportation that's already coming by, um, in a more efficient way. And I can already see sort of those issues happening. So, I also wanna, you know, just bring up, I haven't talked to SRP, but just the impact that that could potentially have on people, um, who might be busing our kids to school, because I know that's a really tough position just to keep filled. Um, and I didn't even think about it until one of my peers mentioned it, but some of these kids have started school during COVID times, and that's already rough enough. So, potentially moving them back. And then I can already see in my head what's gonna happen when we have to rezone again. We're gonna be right there next to Littlewood, and I'm just seeing us getting rezoned to Glen Springs and then getting rezoned back, depending on how things shake out. So, I can already see that there could potentially be other puzzle pieces that have to move, you know, for some of these kids multiple times while they're in an elementary school or middle school or high school. Um, so, we'd really appreciate if we could stay zoned, if suburban heights could stay zoned with Littlewood.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, these are my comments. The pro- current proposed zones don't balance out the overcrowding and the under-enrollment. So, why are we doing new zones if they don't address one of the core problems of why we started this process? And I watched the last workshop where it was discussed about having the magnet program, students reflect what our county diversity looks like. However, there is no discussion about that for our whole schools. Why would it be so important to have a balanced, diverse IB program or culinary program at Eastside if you're gonna have ninety percent of the kids in the major program all being African-American? Where is the diversity for them? Why are we not talking about complete school diversity and not just a magnet program? Also, the district has been failing subgroups of African-American students in all the schools all over the county for decades, it seems like. It's not just our SI schools. But now with the rezoning, you're gonna concentrate all those kids together. So, all the kids that have been failed at Idowal, at Rawland, at Lake Forest, Metcalf, they're all gonna end up in the same middle school, and then they're all gonna end up in the same high school. I don't hear anybody talking about what resources will be put into those schools to help when you concentrate all those kids together? Because they're gonna come lacking. The middle schools are already dealing with this. The, you, you got a whole incoming group of sixth graders with lacking skills because you failed them in elementary. And now you're concentrating them all together, and they're gonna stay together. What are the resources that are gonna go to these schools to help you not to fail these children continuously? So, I mean, I'm for rezoning, but it needs, it's, the work is not done yet. There's more data, there are more things that haven't been vetted out or discussed, and we're not ready. I wanna see this process continue, even if we have to push back the timeframe another year and we just continuously work on this. But what we have right now, that's, it's not, it's not a good thing, 'cause we haven't achieved any of the goals that we set out to start with. So, that's my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Frazier. Shane Hensler? Or Cherie, I'm not sure. Looking at your handwriting. Then after her would be William Hensler.
Good evening, Board. My name is Shane Hensler. I am, um, I'm sorry, just my point, I'm against the rezoning. I currently, um, am residing right off of Ninety-First. I just recently purchased my house, and when I purchased it, I bought it for the primary reason of the school district. I have three kids that this is in directly effect. Currently, we are zoned for Beaufort High School. And we will be rezoned to Gainesville High School. Nothing against Gainesville High School, but they score below in every subject in comparison to Beaufort's. I don't know if that's the school, I don't know what's going on with that. But again, I, I reside where I reside for that reason. And it's hard for me not to feel that the rules that were already in play are being changed, and my children are gonna be slighted because of these decisions. Again, um, that's basi- basically the gist of it. I don't have anything, I know everyone else is like, whatever gripe they have, it's their own. But my child, like I said, if it, I feel like my child's a number right now when it comes to this. And it's hard for me not to feel like that, 'cause when we were looking at the metrics when I was seeing the new proposed plan, the numbers don't really change differently with the overcrowdedness. And the, if anything, my distance will be further, so the transportation is longer. And it's not like relying on school buses, because I had a daughter recently who was in high school in Beaufort. And the school buses would be late by an hour, or they would just be told like, oh, we'll have to find another bus driver for that route. So, it's not like it was consistent on that end as well. So, if you can please consider, again, my, my neighbors also feel to have the same sentiment where we live at. So, if you can please consider us in this rezoning and keep us zoned for Beaufort's, please. Thank you, I have a good night.
Thank you. William Hensler?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just to piggyback off what my wife's had said before, not that I think anything's really gonna change based off of what I say, but this is probably, I don't know if this is one of the last meetings that we're gonna have, so I have to, you know, at least allow my point of view to be heard. Yes, we, we have three children that are gonna be affected by this. Yes, we purchased our home because it was zoned for these schools. The biggest problem that I have is, we have a school, looking at the high school, which is rated for, one of the higher-rated schools on all the metrics here in the county. And you take my daughter, when she goes to high school, and she's gonna be located in a school that performs under, much less in those metrics. So, what do I say to my daughter at that point? You're just sucking it up for the team and just taking one for the team, so, and a name to just rezone things? Doesn't seem like that's a solution. Every time I go to one of these meetings, everybody always has something to say how it really affects them. As my wife said, I feel like we're just a number. And I think that's a bad, a bad way to treat our children, I think that's a bad way for that message. Another thing is- Another thing is, I also saw, or I think it was on the first meeting that we went to, where it was basically looking at the numbers, the proposed numbers, the expected numbers. Yeah, the demographics really don't change a lot in some of the schools, so nothing's really changing there. So I don't know what the change is about. I know one of the issues is kind of stated twice, but it more or less has the same thing, which has to do with transportation and safety. But I don't know how that's making transportation or safety a better issue for my family, having them pass a school to go to another school. On top of it, that school won't perform. It just doesn't make sense to me. But the other thing that caught my eye was, yeah, these are projected numbers, but these aren't final numbers. So does that mean it's going to change in two or three years or five years? You guys don't know, maybe? I know I don't know. So is that going to leave us having to change somewhere else? I, I think that's a pretty tough position for us to be in right now. And, uh, you know, I mean, I know that we haven't had a major rezoning here in the county since probably the mid-eighties, I believe is what I read, some minor changes here and there. But if these changes take place, are you going to look at us and tell us that these changes are going to be fine? They're going to stay in place for the next two decades? I don't think anybody here can make that promise or make that prediction. The community grows. That's, it's, it's just how it is. I think this is something that we probably would have seen coming a long time ago. That's a little bit frustrating. The population didn't explode in, in a year or two years or three years. It seems like maybe it was a can that was kicked down the road over many, many years and now we're paying the price with a big inconvenience for a lot of people. And that's just, that's just, it's a tough thing to be, to be treated like you're a number. And worse, myself, I'm an adult, I can handle it, but to have my child treated like a number is, is just very disheartening. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the sheets that I have. Are there any more phone calls? You have one?
Caller, please state your name. You have three minutes with the board.
Hi, this is Rochelle. Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow school board members. I want to call in and just say how very refreshing it is to know that several of you sitting up there, when you ran for school board and, um, when you came into office, you may have had some preconceived ideas of how you would do things, how you would rezone, and what changes you've made. And I find it refreshing and I find it's given a lot of people renewed hope to know that several of you sitting on the board have had open minds and open ears. And you have truly listened to parents in the community from all over the community, from all walks of life, from all economic levels about their concerns for the rezoning of their students. And it has made some of you pause and think and rethink and think. And I applaud each of you for doing that, that has done that. It has shown that you did not have a preconceived agenda, that you're not listening to other forces, that you are truly listening to parents of students whose daily lives will be impacted. A lot of these parents, they're not wealthy, but they make the sacrifices. They have worked hard. They have bought homes in certain areas to be a part of their students, their students' school, to volunteer at school, and to be a huge part of their community. And those of you that have taken time to listen and may have changed your stance from what you originally had, I applaud you. Thank you so much. You are showing that you are there for the students and the parents of Alachua County. It's much appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. George. Now I have Ms. Jamie Aba- Aba- uh, wait a minute. America Abaka?
Abaka.
Abaka.
I wasn't going to speak, but all these parents here pulled at my heartstrings. Yes. Um, I'm a mom of two, one formerly Hidden Oak, one is in Hidden Oak now. Um, we moved here from New Jersey, so we had no idea what Gainesville was, where it was, anything about this town. So when I say we bought our house here purely by looking online and the school systems and what the grades were of the school systems, that's literally what we did. We sacrificed, we sacrificed what our house was purely for the Hidden Oak school system. Um, we have one son who made it through Hidden Oak. He's now in Fort Clark. And I have one that just started kindergarten this year. Um, and I am a single mom. So right now, my drop-offs are Fort Clark, Hidden Oak at two separate times. I've never once used the bus school system in the entire time he's been there. So I do car drop-offs every single morning and I do pickups with EDEP every single afternoon. Um, and I can tell you that making it through the six years at that school, the only way that I made it through was with the village that we established at Hidden Oak. And the only way that the transition for my kindergartner, the way he made it into that school without any issues, any crying or anything this year because he has had issues at daycare, he had behavioral issues, learning issues, things like that, was because of the staff at Hidden Oak. He was fully aware through his brother, the teachers and things. Yes. Um, the teachers and people there. Um, so it made the transition so much easier on him. And now we're going to just uproot him and put him into Williger. Now, in the mornings, again, we have to wake up earlier. As I said, I have two different drop-offs. I have to go in the complete opposite direction in Fletcher's Mill to drop him off to now go complete, all the way down to Fort Clark to drop him off. I mean, with the economic diversity that is also going on and what's going on in Hidden Oak, I was going to fight to keep him in Hidden Oak. But honestly, with what's going on in the rezoning, I don't know if I really want to. Because honestly, the teachers and everybody that makes up that school and made that community what it was and what we fought to be a part of is not going to be the same. Because I can tell you firsthand and talking to some of the people there, they're not going to stay around. If that school is going to turn out what it, to Williger ended up being, that community is not going to be the same. And you guys are going to lose a lot of good people there. Parents, teachers, and everybody included. So I really think you guys really need to reconsider your rezoning here and just look at everything all over again because it's affecting these kids here. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Mesa?
Hello.
Hello.
Thanks for being here. Um, I was also not going to speak, but, um, as a teacher, um, I kind of wanted you to hear a teacher's perspective. And I think so often, uh, the teacher's perspective is pushed to the side. And, um, we really care about the students and what the rezoning is going to do to a lot of neighborhoods. Um, I know our low-income neighborhood that we have, our economically disadvantaged students, is a relationship that we've put in place for the last 12 years. And I know a lot of the success that I've had with students coming in who need more attention, who need more love. Um, they are willing to work with us because they know that we believe in them. They come in and they see sisters, brothers, uncles, aunts, cousins, who have already been through the school. And it's so important, the relationship aspect of it all. Um, teachers are so tired after COVID. Um, I was lucky enough in 2020 that I had my, uh, my baby girl. And, um, I was gone, but when I came back, it was hard to, to approach seeing all of my colleagues. Um, they had suffered such trauma from all that was expected of them. Um, and I worry about teachers and I worry about parents and I worry about students. Um, I'm against this rezoning. I'm not against a rezoning. I think there's a lot of issues that are not addressed in what we have here right now in this plan. And I think we could do great things if we're looking at, um, equity and we know that that's a big issue. Um, if we look at this as a, as a different issue and looking at other solutions, other possible solutions, I really think we could do wonderful things that could really make all the students more successful. But right now, I don't see that happening. I don't see that we're there. I don't see that we're ready to push this through. And I would hate for us to do something so big without truly knowing the problems that we have every day and how we're going to get through those problems. So I really, I urge you to please go back to the drawing board and look for what else can be done before we make this monumental, life-changing decision for so many kids. This is going to affect so many kids who have already been through such trauma. And to just move them without really doing the due diligence would be a disservice to teachers, to parents, to families all over. And I'm also a mom of a Hidden Oak student, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I want to say to our citizens, this has been our special meeting for our hearing, public hearing on rezoning, and we have heard you. We thank you tonight for all of your comments. We will be here on December 5th where the board will have a discussion. You have one more call? Okay, one more call. Hope.
Caller, please state your name. You have three minutes with the board.
Hi, my name is Sarah Weitzel. I'm, um, a parent of three children, two of which currently are at Meadowbrook, a fifth and fourth grader. And I will have a third child entering Meadowbrook possibly, um, kindergarten of next year. Um, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, um, but I just wanted to say that we absolutely love our school. Our school is like our family and during the toughest times of COVID, um, our school family is probably what helped us all get through those times. And, um, without the teachers and the staff, um, I don't think it would be the same. My kids are internally grateful for that, um, the hardest times. And to me, it's very disheartening to know that we would be possibly rezoning to Talbot. So based on the maps, and I'm sure others have echoed this in the room, um, all of the adjacent neighborhoods to Huntington are, uh, been rezoned back or pushed back to Meadowbrook originally and where the lone wolf, I guess, on that, in the area, um, sharing 39th. And so, uh, my daughter currently rides the bus and is a bus rider on 2029. So she goes that route every day. And to know that that same route would have to take the light and take, um, go through our neighborhood to turn around to get the, from the south side of Northwest 39th to the north side of Northwest 39th to pick up the same kids and pass our existing stop seems absolutely crazy to me. Um, for me personally, um, having a fifth grader and a kindergartner next year, I'm at a real, um, crossroad here because I, do I let my fifth grader stay with his friends and finish out his last year? Or do I force him to go with his little sister and help her get acquainted because this is a new school, new everything? And him leave his friends at a school to know that all the kids that are going to Talbot are zoned for Westwood except our neighborhood. Our neighborhood goes back to Fort Clark, back with the Meadowbrook kids. So it's, for that reason, I mean, for my son, that's, that's horrible that I'm going to be splitting his friends and then he might be able to rejoin them in sixth grade. But for my daughter, all the friends she would make through K through five, she wouldn't be able to go to middle school with them. She would have to start over yet again in the sixth grade. And for that reason, if we do continue to rezone that way, we, I, I feel like we can't stay and function off of two elementary schools that start at the same time, two PTAs, two EDEP programs in two different parts of town with traffic. It's, it's, I don't think it's doable for my family. So I'm really pleading that you guys listen to the concerns and everything and, um, let us stay at Meadowbrook. Um, and I don't want to, it's a stop. I want it to continue in talking about the rezoning, but I feel like there has to be more thought put in instead of us getting ping ponged back and forth between a school that's over capacity. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Segal?
Uh, yes, a point of clarification, Madam Chair. Um, in looking over this, we have now, when we initially adopted the agenda for this rural development, we had the December 5th, 2023 meeting as the second reading. Based on the last board meeting that we had the first reading, the sense is from the board that we wanted to push that date back. But I don't believe we ever formally voted on it. And so I'm bringing that to the court's attention, I mean, to, excuse me, I'm back in, I'm back in litigation right now. And to the chair's attention, because we can delay the second reading. We talked about delaying it until, I think, the second week in, in January. But I think we need to have a vote on it because you had adopted, uh, 12-5 as the second reading.
Thank you. If we're going to delay, uh, you have a comment, Ms. Segal?
I'm going to make the motion for us to do that.
Okay, go ahead.
So move, um, um, having heard what the staff attorney just said to us and hearing the wanting to continue to work on rezoning, I move that we, um, move to have the second reading in January of 2024. I don't know, do we, do we need a specific date? Because there was some discussion about that back then and I.
We had talked, it would have to be, the first week in January, we are not in school.
Right.
The second week, um, the, the end date, January 15th, is a Monday. And that's Martin Luther King Day, so we can't wait that long. We had talked about having it either the Tuesday or Thursday the week before. Um, we can.
Done by January 12th? Would that be sufficient?
It has to be done by January 15th. So it has to be the week before the 15th.
Right. Because the 15th is a holiday. So.
Yeah.
Do we, um, so January 9th is what, or what do we want to put, have the latest date, January 12th? Because that would give us staff time to schedule and us notice. Do we have to decide on a specific date tonight is what I'm asking?
Uh, no, we don't. We have December 5th meeting to make more decisions about a specific date. I just want it to be clear on the record that we're not going to have the second reading on December 5th.
So the motion would be that I, I move that we, um, delay, we delay to have the second reading of, on the policy 5120, um, changes to January of 2024.
All right, is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Again, to our citizens, thank you all so much tonight, uh, for coming. We did hear you. We hear your comment and I tell you, this board is listening. But again, I want to thank you. We have a lot of factors to look at. You all have been diligent, uh, in coming and, and sharing your input. And that is important because we all are here to do what's best for our children here in Alachua County. With that being said, our meeting is adjourned.
I'm sorry, I had a question I wanted to ask. Yeah, because during this time right here, also, we can ask, the board can ask staff.
Go ahead. You have a question for the attorney?
No, for Ms. Dr. Edwards.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Edwards, thank you for the info that you have. And you sent, um, an email to us with some information. So I guess my question to, to you is, those are all things that sound like that you were going to, that were being considered. And we have heard from our citizens tonight and we, as well, that I've marked the schools that are, um, that are, still remain over the 90% threshold. So will the work that you guys, that you and DRMP, the staff, the team working on, is that, is you going to be addressing? What additional work? Are you all planning to do additional work? I mean, tell, tell us what the, what to expect.
So the email that you all have were the additional changes after we had community input, um, for changes that needed to go into neighborhoods. And so those have been updated in the most recent maps that we shared on the rezoning site on the 31st of October. Um, you also had outlines, um, uh, that came from when we had our workshop from the various, um, members of staff from their departments that would be considerations for budget. So what we needed to do and what I was saying in the introduction today is that we have been collecting, uh, the emails, phone calls, and data information that we have received from community input. Um, and what we've been getting even recently, even up as today. We have considerations of those things and have heard community. However, we are not at a point where we'll continue to make changes right now because we, in order for us to do budgetary impact, if we continue to change zone lines and where kids are, we cannot provide the budgetary impact of how, what will it cost for transportation? We could tell you as, um, a certain number of students are going from school X to school Y, what changes that makes in transportation. But if we then move a whole group of kids, then that changes what that impact would be. And so in order for our staff to be able to do the budgetary impact and financial impact, we need to have stagnant data. We need it to remain consistent at this point in time. And, um, as we move forward and we get that information, that's what we're working on with DRMP, ensuring that, for instance, our transportation director has all of the finite pieces that are necessary for him to be able to, um, actually make those projections on cost. When we have that, that will be shared, um, with the board so that they will be able to look at what the impact is. Um, and we would be able to determine, we have, for instance, the number of neighborhoods where we're getting consistent feedback from people. Um, where there are problems that are coming up over and over again, such as the things that have been shared problems that are coming up over and over again, such as the things that have been shared by Littlewood or Huntington. We know, for instance, that there are concerns that have been brought up from the Newberry community. There are concerns about two specific areas that are zoned for Littlewood. We recognize that in those neighborhoods, however, there are considered hazardous walks, right? So we know that in Rock Creek, that there are concerns about families who would be moving from Rock Creek to Glen Springs. But as you have heard from community members on today, they are already feeling like there is this ping pong. And going back and forth and not really being sure of really what the impact is, is not something we will continue to do, because we have to also get the data in terms of finances to you in order for you to meet this deadline. We don't have, you know, the opportunity to have, right now, pending on what your vote may be and what the direction of the board may be, we don't have time on our side to continue to make the changes and those adjustments and get it to everybody, and also meet the deadline of December 5th or January. So that is why we have ceased making changes at this point, so that we can get the financial impact. If this were something that went on for a longer period of time, then we would continue to make changes and then provide that information at a later time.
Thank you for that. So I guess, what I'm kind of in a quandary about is, you've told us in a previous meeting that you weren't pursuing the racial diversity or economic diversity, right? So I was under the impression that the only issue you all seem to be addressing was capacity.
I don't know. Let me just interrupt here tonight, what I'm getting. Tonight was just to get the rest of the public input. If we want more, because we didn't have discussion as far as from the board perspective, tonight was to make sure we got information from our parent, from our community, and then we will come back and have more discussion on December 5th.
Madam Chair, the advertisement, actually, the advertisement says that they are, we are defective of this policy. Well, let me, the purpose is to discuss, consider, and receive public and school board member input on the district-wide comprehensive rezoning.
What was displayed, but you have one more question? I'm just saying it wasn't on what I had.
Okay, but I'm reading, this is directly from the advertisement.
You have one?
I do have additional questions. I have more than one, maybe have more than one. So I guess, my question is, is we have all the schools that are over 90%. So are you saying that no more work is going to be done on that?
I'm saying that we can continue to do work, but in order for us to get that work done by the deadline that's already established, we can't, we can't make all of those changes and meet that deadline. If the comprehensive rezoning process is expanded and the deadline is moved, there's a lot of work to be done. And I think the complexity of doing comprehensive rezoning and being able to prioritize that, it requires time. There are a multitude of things and factors that are in place. Every time that we shift something, there is a domino effect. It impacts something else. It impacts transportation. We move one community, then another in community is impacted. We make changes for one school, capacity is increased at another school. We have to look at where programs are in one place, and then whether we can make shifts in another. It's a lot of, a lot of work to do that, and a lot of careful and thoughtful work. We have heard from our community that, you know, students are being considered as numbers, but in reality, we talk a lot about who the kids are and the impact that we're making with them. But we are mid-November with a December 5th deadline, and we know that part of the decision-making that we have...
The motion we just made, the second reading will be in January.
But we're still talking about two weeks, and also being able to have the financial impact is part of what our focus has been, right? So the financial efficiency of the moves. So what, one of the questions that was raised previously was, when you all have made these changes, how has it impacted our school district financially? What is the impact that it makes with transportation? What is the impact that it makes with, in terms of like portables and being able to save costs for the district? For us to actually be able to come up with concrete numbers for that, we have to look at the data as it stands to be able to share that impact. If we move every single week, then those data points move for us to be able to gather the financial impact. So what we are trying to do at this point in time is to leave the maps as they are, show what the impact is, and it may be that the board would say, this is not sufficient. It may be that the board says that we need to take into consideration several other pieces. But what we focused on was looking at capacity. We do have, as one of the members of the community said, we do have more schools that are considered overcrowded, but we have less schools that are considered overcapacity. And so we have to look at where those priorities are.
I have a, I have a lot of questions. I don't have answers, so I guess I'll just leave it at that. I won't prolong the time, so.
Thank you, Ms. Sir. Mr. Andrew?
So just to chime in on what Dr. Edwards was mentioning, is if we continue to do moves, we won't have a financial impact, right? Because that would change all the time. Every time, you know, there is that domino effect that she's talking about with costs, whether it's transportation, which direction kids are going, whether leased portables are removed or what have you, right? So really, what is the last thing is the financial analysis based on a set map. So to continue movements, the expectation of having a financial impact on whichever date, I think we said in January, the second week, right? But we didn't specify the date yet. So, but whenever it is that week, if moves occur through December 20th, then we're not going to have the financial impact prepared, based on, because it takes all that coordination between where the routes are going, to all the multiple schools and which neighborhoods, and all of that, as we know, very complex, and it wouldn't be fair to Dr. Rolls and our team there to try to figure that out, because they would have to work over their winter holiday break. So that's where we're at, is just that understanding that continuing to make adjustments and tweaks eliminates the ability within that time crunch to have the financial impact and costs available. And so if the, if the direction is to continue with, with adjustments, then I just want everyone to understand that financial impact and analysis can't be done, not because we're unable to do it, but because time doesn't permit.
I just don't understand what good it is knowing the financial impact if we're still going to continue making changes to rezoning. And so to me, it makes infinitely more sense to finish how we're going to get the rezoning, then look at the financial impact, see if it's something we can live with or not, and then make decisions then about how we're going to move forward. But sitting here stagnant for two weeks, a month, a month and a half, coming back with the same data, because I'm not good with this at all. There are, you know, as I read emails and I listen to parents, I cannot fathom the, why anyone would even think to move somebody from a school where they can walk to school to a place where they have to have transportation, when we have transportation issues. And I, I just, you know, I, you know, I look at this thing, and kids are just moving all over the place. And, you know, we're taking kids from schools, but then we're adding some kids to those schools. And, you know, we're doing a lot of this based on maybe future growth. But I say, let's do the rezoning based on the numbers that we have here, within reason. I mean, if you know that there's going to be a housing unit or something in the next year that's going to impact numbers, let's look at that. But why are we disrupting the lives of all these kids here for future kids that could or could not come in? And I know that that's, I know I have a simplistic view of it, and that you have to take some of those things into consideration. But, but, you know, I would expect numbers to be more realistic at these schools that were way overcrowded, and they're not. And, you know, we have right now, at Twilliger, we're busing kids in, and the neighborhood right next to it is not even zoned for it. And so, you know, decisions have been made about rezoning that I don't even know how those decisions could be made. But, you know, we can't just stop and say, okay, well, let's find out what this zoning that's really not great at all, how much that's going to cost, and then we'll see how much that is. And then we're going to, we're going to jump on the trail and do some more rezoning, and then pretty soon, we're going to be out of time to do it for next year. And so, you know, there's got to be, there's got to be some more thought put into this. And so just stopping to find out the financial impact at a point when, when I know I'm not satisfied with it, and I think a lot of the population is not satisfied with it, I think is crazy.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. Dr. Rockwell?
I'm going to try not to repeat what Mrs. Abbott said, because she said a lot of the things I was thinking. But why did we just vote to push this back a month if we're not going to do additional work to address some of the concerns we have with these zone lines during that month? It doesn't make sense. In terms of the financial and transportation impact, I realize that we cannot have 100% accurate numbers until we finalize maps. But if the goals of the rezoning were to balance our capacity and enrollment and improve our financial efficiency and our transportation efficiency, then we should have had some data modeling of the financial impact and transportation impact throughout the whole process. Every iteration of these maps should have had data modeling and estimations. We have an entire data analytics and AI department at UF that does that kind of data modeling. We could have collaborated, we could have worked with them. There were opportunities for our district team to bring some of those people in, not just rely solely on DRMP, who mainly deals with drawing lines and figuring out exactly where people live. But I just, I'm kind of baffled by the fact that we keep saying, well, when we get to this point, then we'll have data, when data should be guiding how we get to that point. Data shouldn't come after the fact, it should be how we guide our decisions. And we say, when we shift these student, these neighborhoods this way, it has this impact. If we instead do this, it has that impact. Which one's better for our community? And if, I feel like we're, you know, we are continuously on this, up on this dais as a board, and our community members are continuously asking for information that, to me, is reasonable information to request, and it just isn't there. And I don't understand why. And I really don't understand the reasoning behind, well, we've just pushed out our timeline a month, but we're not going to do any additional work in that month. I just, it doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Dr. Rockwell, Dr. McNeely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a little bit confused too, after hearing all of my colleagues speak and the superintendent. But I wanted the public to know that all of the community input sessions that we've had, I did not miss one of them. All of the emails that we have received, I have read each one, and some of them more than once. And even the calls that some of the citizens who've got my number from somewhere, I don't mind that, it's out there, you've called. And so I'm perplexed tonight, because after Attorney Siegel says, technically, this is not until the next meeting that we have, would be the second reading. Is that correct?
It was originally scheduled for December 5th.
Okay. Last month, I think it was last month, it could have been before that. And I want the public to know that rezoning was one of my top priorities, wasn't my only one, but it was one of the top. But I said last month, and I could be corrected, whether it was last month of the last meeting, when we had much discussion about rezoning, is that I wanted it to be placed paused. Now, I'm saying, we are not thoroughly ready. And I think I was told by Attorney Delaney, or it could have been Attorney Siegel, please help me, that if we did not meet the deadline, then we could not, we would have to start all over again. And then that certainly means that we would not be prepared for the 24, 25 school year. Is that correct, Attorney Siegel?
No, we'd have to start the 90-day period again. And the reason we had scheduled it originally to end December 5th is because of the issues that would arise in January and February about charter schools and other things. But then, at the last meeting where there seemed to be such consternation about what we had to do and do it so quickly, I did suggest that we had until January 15th. Now, if we don't do it, we don't lose everything that we've done already. But we just have another first reading and another 90-day period, but that would get us into March and April, and that would be up to the board.
And that would mean you certainly would not be ready for 24, 25. I would think not...
That would be difficult, yes.
Beg your pardon?
I think I would defer to Dr. Edwards on that, but it may be difficult.
Dr. Edwards? She says she's deferring to you.
I'll jump in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So it's the, going, restarting the 90 days, as we had talked about, I think our efforts were to try to get things done before magnet season, open house, the applications and all of that process. So the effort there was for a lot of reasons, but part of the discussion was that, as we all know, or most of us know, that the magnet open houses, the application process, all that takes place, open houses, basically in January, the first week of February, the applications are open, and then we take those for several weeks before moving forward with that whole process and working through that process.
Thank you, Superintendent Andrew. My opinion, and there are five of us sitting up here, but my opinion is that not only should we be pausing, I don't think we are ready for the 24, 25 school year. And I'm going to end it with that, and that will give you all something to sit with for the January meeting. But I'm not in favor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, like, for me, thank you, Dr. McNeely. I hear your heart, but I guess what I want to add, and I'm hoping that staff continues to work and do good work to, you know, put forth a good effort to do this, because this process started, you know, we, as a board, agreed upon that in November, and in February of '23, February 7th, in that meeting, that's we decided to do spot rezoning, and, you know, direct the superintendent and the staff to do that. And then in April, you know, we were, he came back and recommended that we not do spot, that we pursue comprehensive. And I'm just going to tell you, there, we have these challenges, and they're, if we don't address them as a board, and, you know, direct the superintendent to do that, the board doesn't do the work. The five, the five of us are looking to district staff and the superintendent to do this work, to bring it back. There are issues that are not going to get addressed, right? And I'm not for rushing in and not doing good work and to, to address the issues that need to get addressed. We know we have the overcapacity issues in some schools, we have undercapacity or underutilization of assets. We built a brand-new school that, you know, a previous board decided to build almost 1,000 seats before we did rezoning, and there was, you know, a reason that they did that I wasn't part of. But, you know, what Ms. Frazier, the citizen, came and commented on is, you know, her comments, just, they resonate with the notes that I have here, and I didn't make them, but her comments are what I had written. and I didn't, didn't make them, but her comments are what, what, what I had written to make. Is we have a lot of issues and things that we said we wanted to, to try to do, which the diversity piece was just, it wasn't pursued because of the, the impact. But what I said to staff after the Santa Fe High School hearing was that if, if we're not going to pursue diversity at the lease, then we need to be going in on making sure that we're addressing the capacity issue. And if we're saying financial efficiency, which our finances is another challenge that the district is dealing with, all of the lease portables, I said, just tell me that. Are we getting rid of those, where we're not leasing portables? That's almost $1 million a year that we're paying for that. But if we do those two things, utilize existing buildings and become more efficient in that, in that aspect of our operations, and we don't have leased portables, we, we look at things there. Ms., Ms. Frazier, as well as, we can say, and was shared by Ms. Nguyen in our meeting, earlier meeting today, is facilities do impact the educational opportunities of certain students. And so, we have some students that are in schools that are nice buildings, but they go into lunch at 9:30, 10 o'clock in the morning because there's so many students, and we've received emails about that. All right? And then we have, we, we're fortunate, you know, thanks to the Hessen sales tax that we've been able to rebuild Metcalf at one of the oldest school, older schools in our community. So, they have a lot of capacity. It's a beautiful facility. But we haven't done the work to move students into that. So, rezoning is going to have to be done. And I understand it's, it's, it's kind of, nobody wants to change. I've shared my, my experience with this back in 2002, and I was very strongly, I had some of the same feelings that parents here. I don't ignore your feelings. I don't. I didn't want my, we, we bought our home in, in a particular area, in Northwood Oaks, we lived, and we were zoned for Talbot at the time. And that's why we went there. We wanted our, our children to attend school there. Our son went K-5. And when the, the last major rezoning the district did, we were zoned out of Talbot into Norton. And we came to meetings and all, and that, that same year was when they went to the neighborhood zoning model, where students attend schools closest to where they live. Well, we contended, like some of you all, we were, we were moving out of Talbot, which we were kind of equal distance from there to go to Norton. But nevertheless, we went. But what we ended up with are, were some schools that are, that are pretty much all, we have several schools in East Gainesville that are almost 100% black. And then, we have little diversity in schools that are in the West. And we have those schools that are in the East are high poverty. And I, one of our citizens, I could go back to my notes, who mentioned the demog, the socioeconomic status of what this, the latest map, how it takes it out of one school and it makes, inflates it in other schools. But nothing was mentioned about the challenges that we're experiencing in, in Metcalf, Rollins, Idowild. And, and this has, and my colleagues, I tell you, this has to be done. I'm assigned to, we have to do something. Because I'm assigned to Idowild, and I was there earlier this week. And they're, they have their fourth-grade classes are all, I think it is fourth grade, all over the class size amendment. And he has, can have another unit. But he don't have, he has no place to put a fourth-grade classroom. And so, I didn't, not that I even say I don't believe him, but I went, I said, man, show me what you're working with. And he walked me through the school. They have, they're utilizing spaces that were not intended to be classroom spaces to, you know, to offer services to students. So, we have this situation here where we just rebuilt Idowild, and he's requesting a portable. That's additional funding. So, for us, we have got to lean in to staff and depend on staff to do what the board directed them to do, the superintendent and staff to do. It's to bring us back a recommendation where they're addressing these issues. It's nothing but on that. That is what the charge is. Because we have these challenges, the capacity issues and the finance issues. And we have to, we, we have to, that is what, that's what we have to do. We're, as a board, we have, we, it said we were elected for change and to, to do things. Well, this is something that has not been addressed in a lot of years. One of our citizens said early tonight that the can has been kicked down the road, and he's, he's correct. It's for so many years. And Dr. McNeely, for years, you know, she was here. I was a citizen, and she was sitting in that seat right there. And she'd say, I'm going to say the dreaded word, the R-word. And she didn't have the votes to get it done. And now, we're here, and we're, like saying, we're going to stop. But we, I mean, we owe it to the citizen. We owe it to our students. We owe it to our community to be good stewards of the financial resources, the human capital, the facilities. We owe it to them. And right now, we're not doing that. And for us to come here and have started this process a year out, and every time it comes that we're, it seems like we're having, we're getting to the point where we're to adopt the changes, you know, like the homework is due, the assignment is due, there's this, we don't have enough time, or we don't have, we don't, the assignment's not complete, and we're not there. So, I think we, we owe it to each other and to the, to our community to bring back a good product where we are at a minimum. You know, it's been gazillion years since we've done this, but at a minimum, that we address the capacity issues. Because to spend $30 million at Idowild and then pull a portable up there, that's a lot. That's, I mean, and, and he, he may need a portable this year. And I, that just greets me for us to say that we're, we're going to pause and not do anything and go another year with the financial challenges that we have and with the capacity issues. So, thank you all for, for hearing me.
I would like to address the, the pause because, again, as I said, we are taking into account everything, all of the input that we're getting from communities. We know where there is trouble. But as has been mentioned by several people here today, we also know the historical issues that have happened within our community and how long this has been an issue that has been untouched. Thereby, there is a lot of entangling of different factors associated with comprehensive rezoning. It is very difficult to now take this process and do it even within a year. There are multiple school districts that spend more time than this to do a comprehensive rezoning process. And so, when we are looking at, you know, the data, all of the things that are mentioned are not things that our staff members have overlooked. Part of dealing with capacity and which our community, the way in which it is structured and set up, where there is growth on the West Side, where there is primarily minority and low-income students on the East side of town, in order to make capacity take place and to have balance means shifting students from the West to the East and the East to the West in many cases. So, when we look at doing that, it also increases transportation costs. It increases concern for parents. It increases in some issues, safety issues. So, every time we go to make a move, we have to consider what the new impact is going to be. We are not taking anything lightly. We're not overlooking factors. But it does take time to address all of those things. The reason that I said that we would put this on pause is because we had been asked to look at financial impact. And so, in an effort to address the financial impact, to do that based upon what we have right now is the reason that we said we would stop right now so that we can get the financial impact and share that because it was a request that had been made. If we are not, if it is not needed or the financial impact that we want is when we have a more solidified plan that meets the great, needs of the greater community, we can continue doing the work because we already have the list. We already know where we want to move and make changes and address needs and requests that have been provided. I don't know that we'll ever be at a place where everyone will be 100%. That, I do know, everybody won't be 100% happy, right? Because we won't be able to, you know, meet everyone's needs. We can continue to go on, and we can make some of those shifts. What I am not certain about, and what I think will be very difficult, is for us to have complete capacity without impacting also simultaneously the economic balance for schools and addressing the transportation costs. That is why, in previous conversations, we were asking which things needed to be the number one, number two ranked priorities as we did comprehensive rezoning. Because all of the things are in the policy, but they cannot all be addressed simultaneously and meet the needs of each one. And so, we are attempting to look at overcapacity. And as we did, did that, when the rezoning lines were first placed, what we were doing was trying to make sure that we had lines that were contiguous. We were trying to make sure that when students were traveling on buses, that they were on safe routes. We wanted to ensure that as a primary factor that we had the two-mile walkout. There are some schools, for instance, such as Wild's Elementary School, where the, the primary, the, the majority number of students who attend that school are within a two-mile walkout zone. So, that, when you look at that particular school, there are just some changes that you can't make while keeping that factor constant. And so, I, I hear board members and I hear people, you know, concerns and, and having confusion. But I also, at the same time, want to look to the work that staff has been doing. They have been working really hard, especially out of our Office of Student Assignment, to work with DRMP, to get the boundary lines outlined, to hear the feedback that we have been getting from families and making changes based on that feedback so that we can come back and have new data. But we are simultaneously also trying to balance a number of requests that we get, inclusive of the financial impact. So, when we say that we're pausing, it is really to try and address and provide response to the questions that we have been asked. And we're trying to give the reply to the questions. If that is not a priority at this point in time, if we can wait and continue to make zone lines where we're trying to move to have more balance, then we can wait on financial impact and continue to move towards rezoning. Efforts that seem to have more balance where it comes to overcapacity and make that a primary focus as we move into the, the, the week of January 2024.
Thank you, Ms., Dr. McNeely.
Madam Chair, I forgot to say one thing. And thank you, colleague Surtin, for reminding me that this is very, very important. And to be honest, I know it is. But I am not going to ever be satisfied until we really have true, true capacity numbers, whether you're looking economically, whether you're looking at a school going down to where we are almost back at poverty, where we are going to have to put in Title I, a school that loses 400 students at one time. And then, when you look again, the next time we come together, they are now back 300 more students. But at this point, the diversity, well, I shouldn't say diversity, but the economical plunge that faced them made them now totally Title I school, which I think administration was pretty satisfied with that. But then, when you shifted those kids to, let's say, to Toowoomba, now they are no longer at that level where they would need Title I services. So, I'm, I'm confused. And as many maps, as you all have drawn and shifted students back and forth, and one thing that I will never be satisfied with, breaking up neighborhoods. You cannot do that. And I've heard too much, heard from students tonight even, and I'm not happy. And so, I know that the team and Mrs. Moore and you and DRMP, I know you all have worked so tirelessly on this project. But unless it's ready, I'm not going to be able to vote with my colleagues in January to move forward. That's the bottom line. And I know we have started a long time ago, but I'm not, I'm not ready to say go and yes, yay. We've, we've done the rezoning issue, and you've got multitudes of problems. The schools on this side of town, and I represent all, but my district is East. And when you have situations where every, every, there are so many seats, I have a problem. Until, and I think Mrs. Frazier stated it beautifully tonight, as the other parents, I do not want to not accept what you all had to say as well. I appreciate each of you. And that's my comment, Madam Chair. Period.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely, Dr. Rockwell, and then I'll have some comments.
So, the other thing I want to say, I know Ms. Surtin pointed out the issue at Idowild, that they don't have space for another fourth-grade class. I actually had lunch with Mr. Kuhn, and he was telling me the same thing. But we have a similar situation at Meadowbrook. They have no more space on their property to put another portable. So, if they get a few more students in, they're going to have classrooms over the class size requirements and nowhere to put an additional unit, even if they qualify for it. So, you know, we cannot continue to kick the can. And my, my biggest concern with the word pause is when you pause something, it doesn't move forward anymore. If I pause a video, if I pause Netflix, it stops playing. We cannot afford to pause. Now, if we come back here in January and the product we get and the data we get is completely unacceptable, we can send that back, like I would with my students when I was teaching, and say, this needs revisions. I'm going to give you an extension on your deadline because this is not the quality of work that is acceptable to me. But we cannot pause. We can make an extension. And I want to make sure, because language matters, and the language we use matters. And saying pause implies stopping the process. And we cannot afford to stop and kick this can. If we have to extend and keep working, we do, I will be very disappointed about that because I'm concerned about our students at Idowild and at Meadowbrook. I'm concerned about our students who are eating lunch at 9:15 in the morning. And I don't want to have to extend that deadline. But, and you know, I'm concerned about our schools in East Gainesville that are sitting half-empty. And they don't have the resources because they don't have the students funding that school. I'm concerned about all of those things. And I don't want to extend the deadline. But if we have to, we have to. But I definitely want to make sure we're not using the language of pausing the process because that would be completely unacceptable to me.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. And I've heard all of my colleagues, and something I said from the very beginning, zoning. This zoning would, to me, would not even be an issue if we had addressed the achievement gap a long time ago. The problem you have, there are no seats in West Gainesville. There are none. All of your seats are in East Gainesville. But when parents, I've read, just like Dr. McNeely, I've gone to every single public meeting. I have read all of the comments from all of the parents. Parents want their kids safe, and they want to know that their kids are getting a quality education. And because we have not addressed that for so long, that's why your zoning is an issue. It wouldn't even be an issue. But one of the things that right now in our community, and I hear my colleagues, they wanted, you know, rezoning. We try to work together. But the reason that we all ran, even when we talked about spot rezoning, this community told us through those public input meetings, they didn't want that. Then we said we would pause and we'll move toward the comprehensive. Now, we're at comprehensive, and we still don't have all of the data, and we're just not ready. And so, one of the things, I'm, I'm not, and I'm just speaking for myself, I'm not going to upset the community when we don't have all of what we need in order, as far as what is needed. And so, the biggest concern is, right now, in this, in, in our district, your achievement gap needs to be addressed. And that's along with behavior. Because if parents don't feel their kids are safe and they don't feel their kids are getting a quality education, even when we were talking about with spot rezoning, you're going from, and, and, and I'm speaking from citizens. Because if I'm going, I'm not going, and this is what parents have said when I've spoken to parents, I'm not going from an A or B school to a D school. That's just a reality. And until we address those, zoning, yes, it is still important. But we need to be ready, and we need to know that the community trusts that our kid, their kids are going to be safe and that they're going to get a quality education. And if that was in every school, which it should be, as we said, we have subgroups. We have a lot of schools that are in East Gainesville, where all of the seats are, that has been struggling for years. I, I, you know, I thought about all of this. I'm 54 now. I, I, you know, I thought about all of this, I'm 54 now. I was 22 when I started volunteering in Logic County Public Schools. And the issues that we have had, they're here. But we want to move toward, this board, I know we do, towards solutions. But until we address the achievement gap, until you address the behavior, zoning is a third issue to me. And those are my comments. And so I do want to again thank you to our colleagues for your discussion tonight. I want to thank you to the citizens, to our teacher. We want to hear, I think for so long as well, all of our input is important. This is not a board where we, because you're a teacher, you shouldn't come say something for this board. You are important, everybody is important. Because the only way we're going to get it right is all of us sharing what is important to make things work. So again, I want to thank you for tonight, for coming. And now, with that being said, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.